All right, good evening. Welcome to the Lake Mills City Council meeting for September 6, 2022. Hope everyone had a wonderful extended weekend. And if we can get a quick roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Squidnow?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
All right, if anyone could please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of August 16, 2022. Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council minutes from August 16 of 2022.
Second. All right, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five-oh. Thank you. Correspondents, Mr. Fields?
Just had a couple of emails the last couple of weeks. One was on the Sandy Beach about the survey in the trailer park. And the other one was about the Creekwood Farms and the potential of them hooking into sanitary sewer.
Okay. Ms. Curler?
I also received those emails on those two topics, as well as an email about the Sandy Beach restaurant proposals, ambulance expenditure, another email on the ambulance expenditure that's on our agenda for tonight, and another one just generally on the fire EMS service.
All right. I also had EMS on both sides of the issue, actually. Creekwood, some Sandy Beach survey question. I think I had two of those, actually. And then I participated in Dean Sanders' playground dedication for Steve earlier.
I did also attend, yep.
So, yeah, it was a pretty neat event. So, a lot of kids out there playing on it looked good. So, the Parks Department did a wonderful job getting things up and going, and the site looks really nice at this point. Greg? Ms. Bishop?
Yes, I received correspondence about EMS. I also received the invite to the Bartles Beach dedication. Unfortunately, I could not attend. I received a communication concerned about the councils receiving input from the boards and getting input that might be needed from the boards beyond just the reports that we get from their minutes, from their meetings. I received a correspondence also about Sandy Beach, the survey, and how the association and Sandy Beach mobile home residents will be taken into consideration for that. And a correspondence about the sewage treatment plant, Daybreak Farms, and Creekwood as well.
Ms. Squidnow?
Everything that Ms. Bishop said, Ms. Curler said, and Mr. Fields said. I have received all of those same correspondences.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, so we'll move into questions and public comment. There is no public hearing tonight, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. All right, so the floor is open. Is there any public comment tonight? Is there anybody online that would like to make comment? Going once? Going twice? All right, thank you. Public comment is closed. So, we'll move on to the city manager's report. This is Mr. Wilkie's last city manager's report tonight. And we'll probably, after the end of the meeting, recognize it a little bit further, but, Mr. Wilkie, the floor is open.
Well, there are several documents there that are pretty standard that come on a monthly basis. The new one is the band request, and that comes every year about this time. So, it is within the scope of the budget already. So, it's nothing that we haven't seen for 23 years. So, unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Just a quick question on that band director. Is that something the city's been funding regularly for many years?
Every year that I've been here, and as far back as I can tell, before I came, they were.
Okay.
It wasn't necessarily specified as the band director. It was a donation to the city band.
To the city band, okay.
And then, I think, one year they came in and said, "All right, if we have to pay our director this much, would you increase the amount?" And that's why they went with that amount. For that reason.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions or comment? All right, thank you. Next is the council member board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Joint Rock Lake Committee of July, excuse me, June 2, 2022, and June 9, 2022, Police and Fire Commission of June 21, 2022, July 28, 2022, and August 3, 2022. Any questions or comments on these board reports? See, and none will accept those into our minutes. All right, council business. Discussion on the 2023 budget. A summary was included in our packet. Mr. Wilkie?
Were everybody able to get in besides Steve? Did you try?
No, I did not.
Yes, into the clear gov budget document?
I haven't tried yet.
I have not either.
Okay. I know Steve was having some problems. Still having problems even with the other computer?
I haven't tried this one yet.
Oh, okay. I was wondering if maybe your iPad was blocking it or hadn't been updated, but that was one of the things I checked.
It's a possibility, so.
If I find out anything, I'll let you know as soon as possible. If anybody else has any problems, let me know. I provided a summary of probably all the key items that were in there. So, you get an idea of what the budget looks like. And actually, the assessed value went quite high. And so, it looks like if you go by equalized value and the equalized rate, it goes down. It's still generating about the same amount of money. As you know, we have kept operations levy, and we get net new construction, which was 0.224% this year. Last year it was 3.07, and the year before it was 1.89. So, we've been maintaining relatively well. We haven't been doing as well as some of the Dane County areas, but we have had some net new construction that generates about, well, you can see $63,000 worth of net new levy in that area. There were some revenue changes in other areas. One was utility tax. Apparently, we've been adding a lot of improvements to our utilities, and the value of that went up as well as our payments on the utility tax. Miscellaneous revenues went up by $52,000. That was a transfer from a TID into the general fund as reimbursement for unreserved fund balance that had been using that TID previously. All the rest of them are pretty much the same. The EMS includes a 48% increase in the contracted services line item. And then, all the capital improvement plans that are already out there and their associated debt. It does talk at the bottom that the retirement benefits and the, our 6.5% for general employees and 12% for protected employees. Social Security stayed the same. Health insurance was modified somewhat, but health insurance went up 15% this year. That's our proposal so far. We're still, I know Dan and Misty are still working on that. We'll see what we end up with. But from what I understand, this might be our only option this year. So, are there any other questions on any of that?
That 1.7 mill for a new restaurant?
Yes.
At Sandy Beach, I take it?
Yes.
Okay.
I budgeted for it. Depends on how you fund it and those types of things, but at least it's there. You've got it as a holder if you need to make any changes, you can.
Any other questions? Yes.
Steve, I've got a couple. I see the $300,000 per composting again, and we've had that this last year. So, this year, assuming it's not spent before the end of the year, that goes, does that go into the unreserved fund balance then for next year because it wasn't spent?
You mean what we took this year?
What we budgeted for, for the composting facility, but we didn't spend?
Well, you didn't borrow the money.
Well, we didn't borrow. Okay, so there's no cash there?
If you remember, that was eliminated from the borrowing.
Yes. Okay, great. Thanks for that reminder on that. And then, I was curious, so there's pay increases for employees, but then there's also reduction in the health savings account. So, how do those, you know, impact each individual employee? I don't know how the 1.5%, you know, what's a typical salary, and then how is that offset by the $3,000 health savings account reduction, or, excuse me, the health savings account reduction?
Well, depending on your pay rate, impacts your wages different. And then, the health insurance count is flat across the board. So, it was a $250 deduction on family plans and a $125 deduction on single plans. So, I don't know that it, because it goes into health savings account, it depends on how you use your health insurance as to how it impacts you. So, to make a flat-across-the-board statement of how it impacts an employee, I couldn't do that.
Yeah, that makes sense. But so, there, for employees that are using that benefit fully, they'll experience an impact. For those that maybe aren't or aren't using it fully, it won't be quite as significant. Okay. And then, can you just remind us who are our represented employees?
Only the police department.
Just the police, okay. So, then, the 1.5% proposed pay increase for nonrepresented would basically be all other employees except for the non-supervisor police officers?
Actually, the 1.5% is for everybody, and that's the way the... We'll have to check, but I thought it was 1.5% across the board.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Or comments? All right. So, that was a discussion item. See, no further questions. We'll move on. This is item B on city council business discussion, decision on Sandy Beach public survey. There's a motion, 22-9-1-1. Can you, Lori, please read that? I think Lori's our reader today.
Directing the city manager to authorize a survey research center at the University of Wisconsin River Falls to proceed with the Sandy Beach community survey.
All right, thank you.
I may ask a point of order before we have a motion. I believe we approved a motion on this topic last, at our last meeting. So, I am just wondering why there's a new motion before us.
I think it's the same motion.
I think we tabled it because we were waiting on some clarification on the questions. And if you look at the documentation that's provided with this motion, it does have some clarification on some questions that were brought up.
No, I think it passed last, last meeting.
Passed, oh, okay, yeah.
The, if you look at what the survey brought back, they continued to keep the, we asked a couple of questions about removing the towns and made $34 worth of difference. And then, there were questions about the additional questions, and it wasn't much unless they were open-ended questions. Then it got really problematic. So, we pretty much stayed with the same original proposal to keep the towns in. And then, he provided a set of questions, a survey document that I sent to you all, and you should have been able to go through it and see what you thought about it. Greg provided some comments already.
And I did give you the green light to proceed with the community-based questions instead of just the city for the $35. I thought it was worth the money to find out if people in the township are going to use Sandy Beach Restaurant and that type of thing. So, for $35, I was like, go ahead and do it, so.
So, what this does is take that survey that you've read and move it forward, unless you want to add some things or take some things away. But at this point in time, it's kind of like, they're still willing to look at it, but this was their beginning shot. So, if you're satisfied with this, then I'll send it to them and say, "Send it out." If not, then we need to work on some more questions or how it's going to be worded.
And so, I guess I'm just trying to understand, so we don't have a motion, no one's made a motion yet.
Right.
For this, and I wasn't sure if we needed one, but if we're going to discuss it, I guess we probably need some sort of a motion.
I, if it's written up the same way, I think we're okay with what we passed in our last meeting. But if there's any feedback on questions from the council, maybe this would be an appropriate time, or you send Mr. Wilkie a note after the meeting, either way. So, we can open it up if there's any questions about the survey or any comments. I know I sent a couple of comments, and I'm trying to, I should pull up my email that I sent, but...
While you're looking at that, Dan did check on the police contract. It is 1.5%.
Thank you.
Are we going to provide this in other languages?
In other languages?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't read it that close, but I think he did say it would, it could be done in Spanish, too.
I think that would be good, and as far as advertising, we should also make sure that that's part of the advertising, so that we can have all of the, or all of the community involved in the survey.
Well, the RFP that went out that we agreed on said this company was going to take a sampling, a random sampling of people registered to vote in these locations as opposed to advertising.
Fair enough. How are we going to meet the needs of those who don't speak English?
Well, you just suggested doing it in Spanish.
Okay, so there's just, you're just clarifying that there's no, like, advertisement.
Right now, I don't know if a version in Spanish was included in our quote since that, I don't think that was in the RFP.
It wasn't. I'm just, I think that the university would probably have that available to us. The question is how they would be able to flip from one to the other, and I haven't asked that question yet, so.
Please do.
So, the feedback I gave was about the frequency question. I felt there should be a larger range, so maybe drop the twice and add six times just to kind of increase the amount of frequency of use of that facility. I also was wondering if we could get something in there about private party space, if the facility should have that type of use or not. And then, in the summer months, maybe a question related to indoor/outdoor use, you know, which way would somebody tend to use the facility, so.
I have a comment here about question two. It says, "Do you think the city of Lake Mills should provide food service at Sandy Beach Park again?", which is a yes/no question, and then they have a range between strongly disagree and strongly agree. I would just write it as a statement. The city of Lake Mills should provide food service at Sandy Beach Park again and then have that range. Also, I would remove the sentence that says, "There has been no food service since the Sandbar Restaurant closed" because that's inaccurate.
I noted that same, same thing, Catherine, in question two. That second sentence is technically not correct because we have had the food trucks. Makes me wonder if the first sentence should be slightly revised, too. Should the city continue to provide food service?
That's an option.
And then, the next question, they're asking, "What kind?"
Do we know what those circles with the Xs on question three indicate? Is that just a, an error?
Survey, I'll pull it up real quick.
Of something?
I mean, it's not to vote on each, the respondent would be voting on each line. I don't know if it's some graphic to indicate that or something. I'm not sure.
I did it when it was, I looked at, there was a link, and this isn't LinkedIn right now, but when it was LinkedIn, you could populate those boxes with an X. So, that's probably just a representation.
So, I agree, Greg, with your ideas about adding or incorporating some kind of question related to, you know, should there be a banquet? You know, would you be interested in having a banquet facility, something like that? Or, yeah, private parties, something like that. And then, indoor/outdoor dining, I think those are good ideas. And I guess I would agree, if it's only a $34 difference, then I actually like the idea of polling people in neighboring communities as well because they're the ones who are going to come to the restaurant, including, you know, the city would, residents would be footing the bill, but it's only going to be viable if people beyond the city, you know, go to the restaurant. So, I think if it were only $34, that seems like it would be worth getting that additional input.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a comment, not about the survey, but it goes back to the correspondence I think we all received from Mr., no, I hope I'm saying that correctly. So, if we're going to make sure we poll other adjacent municipalities and those residents, how are we going to make sure that we get input from people in these associations specifically? I don't know if the solution is including it in this RFP scope of work, or if it's, I don't want to duplicate the university's work. I don't feel like that's right. But how do we then go back and encourage the same or similar input from these associations?
Do you know how that's handled, Mr. Wilkie?
I do not. I know that they take a random sample of addresses in the community and then use that. But how they would differentiate between Sandy Beach Association residents or not, I don't have any clue. I don't even know if they would be able to, you know, if they had Sandy Beach as their address, or if they have another address that's out of town, that, how that would work. Permanent residents in the area would definitely have an opportunity to be selected, but the ones within the association, that depends on how they're lined up.
For some reason, I understood, and I could be mistaken, but I understood the company was pulling from voter registration data to get those email addresses for the sample. And if these are seasonal mobile home parks, these people are likely not registered to vote, and so, they are automatically excluded then by that process when they, these people live the closest to where we're talking about building this. So, I think getting their input maybe should be a separate process, and we should ask Mr. Noga or other association reps to help us in doing that, again, without replicating the university's work here that we're paying for.
I know that there are some residents who use, that do the six-month, one-day there and then use that as their permanent address because when they're not here, they're in Arizona or Texas. And so, that this is their permanent address, but the chances of them getting selected are pretty thin, so I'll talk to them about that.
Any other questions or comments on the survey?
So, Steve, could you repeat again? Did you say that there, that the survey developer identified that there would be some challenges if we wanted to add questions that weren't related to food service?
No, I don't think that was the issue. I think he was worried about open-ended questions.
Okay.
Which is, I think, a different topic.
Yeah.
So, he didn't, I think he said it was like $2 a question for a normal question, but once you expanded to a, to an open-ended question, it got much more difficult.
Okay. Because of the, what it would take to evaluate the responses and summarize with the responses, yet when it's all narrative, yeah. I guess I was just thinking about, you know, whether we would want to use this opportunity to ask about any of the subsequent phases and whether people had any input on the subsequent phases, but I guess we would need to have some specific questions in mind about what we want to hear from people, you know, whether it's the redevelopment of the mobile home park or maybe more, we've gotten some citizen input, I think, about different style of campground or, you know, how the park itself is, the beachfront is redeveloped. So, I don't know. I guess we would need to discuss that if we want to add any of those, you know, add, asking for input from any of those other, for any of those other topics.
Mr. Fields?
Maybe a time to float a question about the paid parking down there, if that would be supported. That would be one, that would be kind of a follow-up to what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I think what they would look at there is, you know, are you, would you be willing to support paid parking, yes or no? Or, you know, some phase along that line? That would be a question that wouldn't be open-ended. Second is, are you in favor of open-ended, you know, if it became something like, would you prefer this over this, then it gets to be more open-ended, and the conversation gets to be more difficult to categorize.
Are you suggesting that we should add that to the survey?
Now would be the time to, if you were looking for input on it, because that's one of the things of, that we talked about is potentially charging for parking down there at the park instead of having admission into the park.
Yep.
Now would be the time to put it on a survey if you wanted to do it.
Yeah, we'd probably need an introductory sentence that says, "The city is looking at different ways of, you know, financing the park improvements," or something like that. You know, would you be in favor, or, you know, or would you support parking fees instead of the current, current pay system?
Yeah, instead of the admission fees into the...
Admission fee, I guess, is what it is now, yeah.
So, I think we were able to ask a couple of extra questions from what the survey already had. I think you said two or three additional questions, is that what it was? Okay.
That seems like that would be a really good one because that's going to really affect how quickly we can get return on our investment, you know, if the city does invest in constructing something there. The way that we manage the revenue is going to be pretty important.
So, are we going to charge city residents for parking?
I don't know if that's been decided. That's, that would be part of the details, I guess.
Yeah, there are several details, and... Yeah, there are several details and we reviewed the different options for how the parking system would work and what it would take to be able to charge people. So, you know, like, the people who use the restaurant might have a different setup than people who... And then who don't use the restaurant and then people who... I can't remember exactly, but people who were there for a certain period of time versus other types, you know, the computers in the system will keep track of that and figure out the costs. So, you know, you could add that into... That's just something you're going to have to figure out when the time comes.
So I think it's a great question, but I'm not sure if we have enough outlined at this point to put it on the survey because are we going to ask city residents if they're open to paying for parking when maybe they won't have to pay for parking?
I don't think it would be good to freak everybody out either because if they... If there are certain people that see that question or are asked that question, I think, you know, you could have a little bit of panic from the idea that they're going to charge us for parking, you know, and without knowing all of the information. So maybe I agree with you, Mr. Waters, that perhaps we should hold off on that question until we are able to investigate more information.
You guys okay with that?
Well, what if you had prefaced it as, you know, the current park operation includes admission fee for non-city residents? The city is looking at exploring different ways of, you know, gaining revenue for park operations. What would you think of parking? So it doesn't say that they will or won't be charged, but it says that what's happening now is that people who are non-city residents pay an admission fee. I don't know, I guess I just... It seems like we've got an opportunity to ask people for feedback. We're paying the university to do a robust survey. It'd be nice to be able to take advantage of that, to ask a couple more questions.
Give them an opportunity to come back with something for us.
To play the other side, the parking is part of the restaurant phase. I guess Phase Two included the restaurant and parking lot. So it is part of that, part of this consideration, right?
Part of the business model.
It's related to how...
I liked how you set up the question, but how would we... How are we going to fund instead of having admission fees? Or should we continue to have admission fees? Maybe that's question A. Question B, charge for parking. Question C, I don't know what C and D might be, but you could structure it that way.
Or structure it where you could say...
Ideas of how to fund it possibly.
Would you like to keep... You could have like one, two, three. Would you like to keep, you know, the existing structure of paid for admission, pay for parking, or maybe throw a do-nothing or... I don't know. Maybe throw it at them and see what they come back?
Yeah, admission fee for non-city residents, admission fee for all park users, you know, parking fee for non-city residents, parking fee for all cities. You could kind of give people those different options and, you know, which would they prefer? Or they could vote on that scale.
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of aware I want to move forward with the survey so we can move forward with the restaurant. And I don't think we're quite there on the parking yet to make that decision and I don't want to hold up the survey for that, basically. That's my thought process, so. Any other thoughts? Any other questions on the survey? So we'll hold off on parking? Do you need anything else there, Mr. Wilkie? You good, go?
I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Just a comment I noticed that the survey researcher was asking who, you know, would be the contact. So I would assume the new city manager would just be the follow-up for you, Steve.
Yeah, I explained that to him, but I said that I'll work with him next week to get Drake in contact with him.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you. Next is item C, discussion decision on development agreement for 1324 South Main Street North Oak Townhomes, FKA White Oak Apartments. This is motion 22-9-1-2. Lori, can you read this motion?
Motion 22-9-1-2 directing the city manager to execute a development agreement with White Oaks Builders LLC, developer, and White Oak Trust owner for the development of North Oak Townhomes at 1324 South Main Street.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I move to adopt motion 22-9-1-2 directing the city manager to execute a development agreement with White Oak Home Builders and White Oak Trust for the development of the North Oak Townhomes at 1324 South Main Street.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Ms. Quednow, second by Ms. Kurler. Discussion... Well, first, let's go to comment from staff.
1324 is on the south side of the city, just across the bike trail. We actually had a TID agreement in place previously with Classic Homes. These people purchased the site from Classic Homes and are bringing forth a similar-type project. They are looking for TID reimbursements on improvements, public and private. To make the project go, they have sanitary sewer and water. They're running... They're looping the water through the site to connect up with the other site at 1204. They are making electric improvements and substantial amount of roadway improvements. We've asked them to widen the road and put in curb and sidewalk along the, what'll be the northeast side of the street. And so their pro forma shows that they are within our standard for around 50% support from the city from a TID project. So we've presented this to the council, knowing that it met all the previous conditions for what we've done in TIDS.
All right, questions?
Dan, do you want to have any? Go ahead.
So any questions, Mr. Fields?
As I say, just look at these as more... These are going to be more like townhomes, the way they're styled. I know they didn't have a real good front view of it, just kind of a top view, but instead of an apartment, it's going to be more townhome style?
Yes, it's a townhome type.
So it'll be more consistent with the condos on the north side of the drill.
And a large part of this TID is for the infrastructure that you were talking about with the curbing being extended clear out there and sidewalk?
The water and sewer are a big part of it, as well as the street improvements and the sidewalk. But there are some other... There's the stormwater, which includes a detention basin and then, you know, some demolition and clearing costs and those types of things.
All right.
Are they getting a special assessment for the sidewalks to be built and all of that, or is that part of the TID?
That's... They're installing them and then we're reimbursing them through the TID for that.
Okay.
And they're doing it along their property and Vita Plus.
Okay.
Where that old self-serve gas station used to be, if you remember that.
Oh, so I'm looking at the vicinity map. Is that the parcel that's closest to Highway 89, just to the west of this property? Okay, so they're going to extend the sidewalk along that part as well? Do they own that parcel now?
No, Vita Plus owns that. But that work will all be done in the public right-of-way. And because TID's paying for it, they are willing to do it, even though it's a parcel owned by another property owner.
Do we need an agreement with Vita Plus to that extent?
It's in the right-of-way.
No, it's in the right-of-way, so it's a public improvement for us. Actually, Vita Plus has made some improvements and will be contributing to the TID too, so it's not like they won't be paying for some. If you remember, we did that conditional use permit form a little bit earlier and they added a substantial amount of improvements.
So will that extend the sidewalk and the curbing all the way out to the school then?
To the school property.
Okay.
It won't... The grant then kicks in and runs from there down to St. Paul's.
So it won't include the St. Paul property, but it'll go right up to that property?
It'll go up to their property, yes. And then exactly how we end up tying it into where the buildings are is still a question. We've been talking to St. Paul's.
Okay. All right. See, and then can we have a roll call vote on motion 22-9-1-2?
Oh, Mr. Waters?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I did have an additional question. I apologize. I forgot it. Is there going to be...
Go ahead and let you go ahead.
Sorry. Is there going to be any screening or landscaping required between the north side of this lot and the Glacial Drummond Trail?
Yes, all our lots, all our building and site operations plans requires a certain amount of landscaping, so they require trees of a certain size and shrubs of a certain size and green space set up and then some open areas for the residents and those types of things.
Okay.
So yes, there is. And then there is a pretty large detention base in there and they've used that for a amenity. So they've done some things around that too. But mainly, yes, the bike trail and all sides except for along the highway, they have substantial amounts of landscape.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Waters.
All right, any other questions? Did that stimulate any thoughts? All right, let's move to roll call on motion 22-9-1-2.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quednow?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item D, discussion decision upgrading Lake Mills Fire Department to transporting EMT basic services with flex licensing and authorized expenditure of ARPA funds to bring ambulance into service. It's currently tabled. That is... So we have a... Is this the same motion? It's got an A next to it, so it must be a little bit different motion. Motion 22-8-2-4A. So Lori, can you read that motion?
Motion 22-8-2-4A authorizing the Lake Mills Fire Department to upgrade to transporting EMT basic service with flex licensing and authorizing the expenditure of ARPA funds to outfit and bring ambulance into service.
All right, so there's a date change on that, so we should... Do we need to bring it off the table or do we need to bring it off the table?
It's the same motion, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to remove motion 22-8-2-4-A from the table.
Second.
Motion to remove it from table by Ms. Kurler, second by Ms. Quednow. Any discussion on that?
Do we have a motion to...
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Not in favor? Did you raise?
We're asking for not in favor now.
Yeah. Okay, 4-1. Motion carries. Staff comment?
Are you going to... There wasn't a motion... It was tabled before a motion was made the last time, so do you want to make a motion for that or you just want to go to staff comment?
So we need a motion to begin discussion, is what you're saying. I'll make a motion to... I'll make a motion to adopt motion 22-8-2-4A authorizing the Lake Mills Fire Department's service level upgrade and ARPA fund expenditure to outfit and bring ambulance into service.
I'll second.
So motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Ms. Quednow, and now we're open for staff comment.
The one memo I sent was on the differences in the funding for paying for it. So you had options of unreserved fund balance, the grant, or borrowing, and I explained how all three of those work and how they impact each other. And I guess it's what you're most comfortable with using. I think in the long run, the blend of funds that you're going to look at and making public improvements throughout the city will blend out anyway. So whichever one of these you use is going to be pretty similar. So I don't see that as being a huge issue. So I'm comfortable with any one that you decide that you want to use. If you want to switch, make an amendment to that to use the unreserved fund balance or to use debt, any one of those three is fine. The second memo I put out, I know that we had talked about the budget last time, but I want to step back a second and take a look at it from this standpoint. What I tried to say is that making this purchase is good short-term insurance to getting to whatever decision you make 10 months from now. So if you're able to provide a secondary support, and I explained how we would do that in that memo, to Lake Mills EMS, it would be a reasonable expectation that if you decide... I'm going to say this. You had six options, so four of them are going to use... Would still probably use the ambulance locally. From that standpoint, you probably have, you know, at least a 60 or 80% chance of continuing to use that ambulance. But let's say you didn't and you decided to sell it. That amount, that money that you would have invested in the things that you use for the next 10 months to provide a decent ambulance service would be well-spent in providing that additional service to the community of Lake Mills until you make a larger decision. And that's essentially what I was trying to say here. So then I did provide a budget, and I want to talk a little bit about that budget. The budget was for option number three, which was an EMS department with the fire department kind of staffing it. And I used all the expenses of the Lake Mills EMS final budget report to us. So essentially what I did was right down the line, use those expenses. I used some different revenues, essentially the same on fee revenues, but I changed some of the revenues. They have a lot of other off-revenues. I did add the paramedic service stuff. So you could see that that was in there and provided that budget. I think that that is a pretty reasonable budget. I'm sure that it's not perfect, but I'm pretty sure that it's a reasonable budget. There are some issues in there that may change. I used county revenues. I looked at grants. The chances... This time next year, the chances of you having that county revenue are pretty odd. The chances of you being able to get some of the grant revenue that the state's been providing recently may have changed somewhat. But those are issues that are in there that I feel comfortable with based on the items that were provided to me and the backgrounds for that information. So from an overall standpoint, you have a relatively reasonable budget presented on one of the options. I think that it's pretty close to what the other ones were at the same time. From that standpoint, I won't say that I'm going to guarantee you anything on the budgets. So I understand, you know, that I'll probably get beat up for that. My position is, is going to remain the same, that I think it's a reasonable insurance policy from now until next July and that the chances of you continuing to use that ambulance are pretty substantial in the long run. And so I think it's a good risk. So I'm done.
All right. Any questions?
You've got to be kidding me.
Or comments? Nobody wants to go first. Go ahead, Mrs. Bishop.
I'll go first. So your comment about worst-case scenario, we're using this for the next 10 months to provide a decent ambulance service. Okay, so... Okay, so we're augmenting and adding on to the ambulance service we've had now, and what agreement are we gonna need to put in place with Lake Mills EMS to operate this ambulance side-by-side with them, and what steps have been made to do that?
We already are pretty much running on the same system. We already respond to almost all the calls. The only substantial difference that we'd have was is that we'd respond with an ambulance that could transport. Uh, that would be part of our licensing and that would have to be something that Lake Mills EMS would have to sign off when we went for our license.
Do we have any assurances they're gonna sign off on that?
No, we do not.
I'm just making a note, I'm good now.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes.
Um, Steven, your memo, you, um, you indicated that using unreserved fund balance or ARPA funds, in the sense there's really not that much difference, I just wonder if you could elaborate on that a little bit. Are there constraints on the funds that we wouldn't, other than the time to spend, we wouldn't have with unreserved fund balance?
I'm trying to think of, the way I looked at it was like last year, you borrowed a certain amount of money, used, used a certain amount of unreserved fund balance when you did your programs, right, your capital programs? And then, uh, we used ARPA for some things. Again, this year, when I put that capital budget together, it's gonna be debt, it's gonna be unreserved fund balance, it's gonna be ARPA, it's gonna be, uh, tap grant, it's gonna be, and that's all gonna go in there, and it's gonna blend out, and you're gonna pick the programs that you want to hit that number. And so I guess from my standpoint, um, you're, you're not gonna wanna bond for this type of number, but, um, you know, a short-term commercial note, um, the unreserved fund balance or the ARPA funds are very reasonable options that any city would use for this type of purchase.
And I guess what I'm just trying to explore is, um, you know, what are the differences in terms of what we can do down the road when we, if we would choose ARPA funding versus
Unreserved fund balance and debt are pretty unlimited, as long as they're within the scope of debt, or the unreserved fund balance, you can spend on anything. The ARPA funds is very broad, and in particularly in this type of category, um, they, it would clearly fall, uh, this would, purchase would clearly fall into what ARPA allowed. So, uh, but ARPA would allow you to spend on a lot of general services, uh, so like, uh, we spent on the, um, audio system for this room to make public meetings more accessible to people, uh, you could use it for parks because parks were deemed to be a health benefit, um, and water and sewer projects even because they're deemed to have water, the health benefits. So it was, it was a pretty broad spectrum of opportunities for all three of them. So it wasn't like, uh, the restrictions were so bad that it, it limited us in a lot of ways. We spend, you, you're looking at a lot of projects and all the departments that would probably fall into this category of, of ARPA and definitely the other two.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fields?
I just got a couple of quick questions, and I'll just make the disclaimer that I do volunteer in the EMS, uh, the Lake Mills EMS. Couple, two questions, actually. One is, um, just on your equipment list, an obvious one is radios, computer hotspot for in the ambulance. I guess we need radios to make this operational passage inspection. Can you fill in that, kinda that blank? Cause I know we ordered new radios that are going into service last year.
For the fire department?
Fire department itself.
Right, so we have radios available, so we've, they've, uh, covered that expense in, in their operations.
So they added an extra couple of radios for this? Cause it'll be two mobiles, a portable, a computer and a hotspot?
They have plenty of mobiles. It would be the, the one that stays in the ambulance, that would be a spot, and they, they provide, um, uh, hotspots for their trucks already, so.
Okay. Yeah, cause they'll need two mobile radios in this, so there's one in the front and one in the back. I know them are worth a few bucks. Secondly is, if they're gonna put this in operation and start assisting, uh, they're gonna do training, I know Chief Yandre was talking about going through C-04 for ambulance classes, that's a paid class, there's some operating budget then, so where's this operating budget gonna come for the next four months?
They have it out of their training expenses that they already have, and they've already been taking a lot of this because it's very similar to what they do in, uh, for their first responder requirements.
So there'll be some depreciation on this unit when it goes into, into service and stuff, so they will take that in the fire budget? I mean, there's operating expenses, they're gonna go through fifteen hundred dollars, two thousand dollars of the fuel between, just fuel between now and the end of the year?
Yes.
So they can absorb that in their budget?
We already send vehicles, Steve, so it's, it's the difference between sending a, a, uh, engine or ambulance. So the, the fuel expense is already there.
I'm just asking, there's, there's gonna be expenses when you start sending stuff out.
Right, but it's-
There's more insurance, there's more licensing, there's some things that are gonna be extra.
Right.
There's operating expenses.
The difference between the gas and those types of expenses is, isn't gonna change because we already respond to those, so.
But it's an extra vehicle you have to insure, there's addition, there's gonna be some training, it's a paid course that you gotta go through for the licensing that you normally wouldn't do, so there's, there's some other operational expenses.
We already send our guys for the driver's stuff, we already send our people for all the medical. We've been running an operation like that since two thousand and four, uh, when we instituted the first responder program. So it's been a while, it's that we've been incorporating those types of expenses. They will, some of them will shift to the EMS, um, special revenue fund in the future, based on the way that I structured it. It would be a, based on per call. So they would take a calculation of the per calls and, and then bill the appropriate revenue account based on that, because, uh, the revenue account will be set up where you have your billings and your other types of revenues, so your intergovernmentals, and then like, right now, we make a, a transfer to Lake Mills EMS as does all the other towns. So that would be one of the intergovernmental transfers, and so that gets transferred, it's actually a line item in our general fund budget that gets transferred to the EMS special revenue account, and then those, all those expenses are held in that account, so they all line up, and then they're billed based on who's responding by the number of calls. So if the fire department's out there and they've got their people responding in the ambulance, that goes into the special revenue account.
So you said this was gonna be set up like option three, so is this gonna be a standalone department within the fire department so that everything's trackable, there'll be separate cost codes, so we can see what the true expenses and the costs are?
That's the budget I provided in the information tonight. Now, what that ends up being next year, I'm not gonna be a part of, so I'm, I'm trying to give you a general idea of the way the budget's gonna flow, but yes, if you wanted to do it that way, and, and there's, even if you had it in the fire department, it would still be tracked as fire department expenses and EMS expenses. And the EMS expense has to be in a special revenue account because we bill. So everything that's done has to be broken out in some form or fashion, so like we do for a lot of our other departments is, is we do it either on a percentage or on a per call. And because the per call is easy to track between fire and EMS, uh, that's what I recommend it. And then based on the per call, each department would be billed that expense for those types of calls. So I anticipate that the expense of the employees is gonna be about between seventy and seventy-five percent EMS, just based on the number of calls that go out. And then the rest will be fire, so when you look at the amount of expenses that the fire department picks up versus the amount of expenses that the EMS picks up, it's gonna be based on that per person. Then you have your equipment and all that other stuff is easily identified and billed out, uh, by the budget through, um, the special revenue account, and all the billings are done by, I recommend you use the same company Lake Mills EMS is using. I think they, they do a real good job, and, uh, they're local, and, uh, I think that goes right straight in, all that information gets dumped into our accounts, and we keep a great track of what's going on and have, you know, a good idea of where we're at on each one of those expenses and what kind of service we're providing. And I shouldn't say where.
Any other questions, Mr. Fields? I think we can come back to it later, but-
Go ahead.
All right. Any other questions? I went back and viewed our February twenty-third meeting, which is the meeting where we approved the ambulance, and there was a lot of good discussion that, that took place in that meeting, and had the opportunity to talk to other city council members from the past to kinda get some history on, on what we're looking at here. And, um, something that Chief Yandre hinted about, and I got verified, was that twenty-five years ago, Vern Johnson, the city manager, asked the fire department to start training for EMS. And, um, that decision, the reason he asked for that was because he noticed and was reading that volunteerism around the United States is decreasing, and, um, we're gonna be forced to be in a situation where you would have to have full-time staff on at the fire department and full-time staff at EMS. Moving to present day, that's kinda what we're looking at, is, uh, needing more full-time staff to, uh, staff these, these two different business, not businesses, but, but, uh, services. You have the EMS and you have the fire department. So the recommended need is, is six staff members. So do you have six staff members at EMS and six staff members at the fire department? Then that's a total of twelve, or do you combine it to where you have six that can do both fire department and EMS? And that's the model that we're seeing around the county, is that, that people are moving to EMS services within fire departments so that they can capitalize on having these staff that, that work both EMS and fire department. We're, we're seeing a need, EMS came to a meeting within the last couple of months and asked for some staffing help. My understanding is that the fire department and EMS have different medical directors, and by having those different medical directors, I think that causes an issue as far as, as far as crossing over and having the fire department run with, run with Lake Mills EMS and vice versa. At this point, we have an ambulance ready, we need to, uh, to install sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment, and, uh, and it just makes sense at this point to, to basically get them up and running, get the reputation going for the fire department while they're secondary, and there's a chance that by mid two thousand twenty-three, they may be primary, so let's get them up and running and get them used to making these, these calls and, and getting everything in line, so, so at this point, I, I'm in favor of, uh, of moving forward and getting the equipment, and I think ARPA funds is a good way to do that. Yes?
I, I hear what you're saying, and, um, I was doing some research on ARPA funds, um, and there was just one thing that caught my attention with the reason, or with the use of them, and they are, that they are non-reoccurring, um, which we knew, but that, that care should be taken to avoid creating new programs or add-ons to existing programs that require an ongoing financial commitment, when this is taken directly from the, um, um, sorry, the American Rescue Plan spending, um, recommended guided, guiding principles. So I'm on board with the, with the idea of putting equipment into this, um, into the, the ambulance. And until I did further research, I didn't understand exactly, um, what, how the ARPA funds could be utilized, and I'm concerned because we are going to be stocking an ambulance with things that technically will be a reoccurring payment. And are we prepared to, um, handle the cost of continuously and, and, and budgeting for those costs as we move forward in the future, along with the other things that we have? Or should we instead take a look at how our budget is set up even for this coming year and prepare by allocating funds to make sure that we can fill that time, or fill that spot? I hear that you're, you know, I saw, I read your memo as quickly as I could, um, there was a lot there, Mr., Mr., um, sorry, I wanted to call you Mr. Fields, that was my bad. But one of the things that you mentioned was different ways that we could, uh, get funding in there. And why can't we use a little of each? Why do we have to use just one funding source?
Uh, well, first of all, I looked at this as a one-time expense. A lot of the items are reimbursed by the hospitals.
Okay.
And some is reimbursed by the main transporting agency, and some of it, we already purchased on our other equipment, and so it wouldn't be a, a change, it would just be a change of location.
Okay.
So a lot of this is the primary equipment to get us going. So I looked at it as a one-time expense. The amount, I, I mean, I don't see any problem mixing it, I don't see any benefit in it because you could come back later and use unreserved fund balance rather than for whatever you would need in the future, rather than depending on ARPA funds, or you could use debt. In the long run, the operations is, will be looked at as a budget item that, that has to be carried in a different method. So if we take over the ambulance service or we do something else, uh, we'll have billing revenues and we'll have other revenues coming in in other forms, grants and those types of things. So you try and, you try and look at it from the standpoint of, um, what's a viable option for getting this ambulance equipped at this point in time? I think that over the next twelve months, between, you know, what I've already discussed about where we get our other supplies and what we already use and pay for in our ambulance, uh, fire department, uh, we can adequately respond. I'm hoping, uh, that it is a support group and not the primary one, so I'm hoping that Lake Mills EMS, uh, doesn't have any issues or any problems, uh, but I think that this provides us with a good backup support for them. Even in the situation of, you know, that second and third ambulance, I know that they regularly get out the second ambulance, uh, but that's, it's also including the city and the towns, so as you look at it and start feeling about, uh, being able to provide a consistent service, I think that's, this is a good route, but I also think that primarily that all the expenses will be covered other than the city's, surely, supplying, stocking.
Was that a, um, a question that maybe, oh, forget what I said, never mind. I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Mr. Fields?
If we're going to move forward with this motion, I would like to make an amendment to it. I would like to add a whereas. The Lake Mills Fire Department slash EMS to provide monthly run reports to the council with time of dispatch from Jefferson County to time on, and document time on scene for the ambulance or engine when it arrived. Very similar to what we're getting right now. I think we should continue that with that agency also.
I wasn't there yet, but, so can you explain how you're changing the motion one time, Mr. Fields?
I'm sorry?
Can you explain how you're changing the motion one more time?
I would like to add one more whereas in here.
Okay.
I guess that wasn't a perfect spot to put it. But whereas the Lake Mills Fire Department slash EMS would provide monthly run reports to the city council with time of dispatch from Jefferson County to, and also to include the time of arrival on scene by their ambulance or engine, also documented by Jefferson County. That's how it's done now, that the reports that you get. That way it's consistent. I think that's fair.
I think the reports will even be better now that they're shifting to the digital system. I think that'll be in place sometime this fall.
So you're making a motion to amend?
Correct, to add that statement in there. I'll second that motion.
So a motion to amend for monthly reporting, basically, by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Quidnaw. Any discussion on the motion to amend? Can we roll call on the motion to amend changes?
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
All right. So now before us is motion 22-8-2-4A, amended for monthly reporting. Any further discussion before we move to a vote there? All right, seeing none. Let's move to a vote on motion 22-8-2-4A with the amendment for monthly reporting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, item E, discussion decision on staff study, RFP. This is motion 22-9-1-3. Lori, can you read the motion, please?
Motion 22-9-1-3 authorizing the city manager to sign the proposal for staffing study.
We have a motion.
I move to accept motion 22-9-1-3 authorizing the city manager to sign the proposal for staffing study.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnaw, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff discussion. Mr. Wilkie?
You received, I provided you with four examples of, or the four proposals and a memo that went over them. I didn't provide any recommendation. There was quite a broad spectrum in their proposals. Two of them were relatively close in the $14,000, $18,000 range. One of them was 29,000 and the other one was 72,000. I did look at the $72,000 one, that was very, very extensive. I anticipated that McMahon would be closer than I anticipated. They were, they were a little bit higher. The advantage, I think, of HR had in this one was is that they've just recently done two staffing study surveys in the region that included Lake Mills. That was a substantial benefit for them. And then the other one was Allison Burnett Consulting. And she made a proposal that was the low price leader. So I think the amount of experience probably goes to Gov. HR, based on the price, Allison Burnett. But the EMS background and experience with Lake Mills probably goes to McMahon. Because I know in 2000, they did an initial needs assessment study and Jeff was the lead on that. And I know he's been following Lake Mills since we did the executive search proposal. So he has a lot of information on that. So those are the three that I think provide the most reason. But it's up to you guys. If you saw anything in there that you particularly liked or felt was beneficial to the city. I think they all provided a substantial amount of experience in their staff.
Ms. Curler, go ahead and start us off.
Well, I think my reaction to them was somewhat similar to what you described, Steve. I felt that the lowest price one, Allison Burnett, her firm didn't seem to have very much experience. So that maybe is reflected in the price. On the other end, the DeYoung, I think is out of our price range, probably a lot more robust than we were seeking, was more in the 215-an-hour range, whereas I think the other mid, middle ones were more in the 125, 115-an-hour kind of range. So to me, I guess I was, I had sort of narrowed it down in my own mind to the Gov. HR and McMahon. And then I'm, then I'm struggling to kind of choose, you know, which one I think will be the best fit for what we're looking for.
I didn't go back and look it up, but how much did we have in the budget?
$60,000.
Six zero?
Yep, $60,000.
Okay.
I was very pleased to see the bid prices smegly.
My concern about the Gov. HR quote is they don't address our timelines that we need. They say that they won't be able to start work until three to four weeks after even signing a contract. And that just, I think, puts us out way too far. And the fact that they didn't address our concerns with needing the EMS information first is concerning. And it makes me think they don't understand what our needs are.
Yes?
I'm going to agree with Catherine in that I know Gov. HR is probably well-intended. However, McMahon has been, has known Lake Mills and known its staff for quite some time. And I think they have a more personal touch to this versus a more corporate feel.
Any other comments, questions?
That's kind of between the two. I think the Gov. proposal, they had, I liked the way it was laid out with the questions that they had and how they were going to survey the people. Where the other ones, I think, didn't go into that detail. I can go either way. I just was leaning towards Gov. the, I can say it right?
Gov. HR.
Yeah, the Gov. HR, that for the price and for what they had laid out, I thought they would do an adequate job.
I kind of walked into this hoping that McMahon would, would put together a good proposal because I was impressed with them during the executive search and felt that they would be a good fit for as, if we did need some consulting on the fire EMS side, based on the skill set and the presentation that they made at that time. So I guess going into the, going into this, I was already leaning towards McMahon. And since they do fit into the budget, I guess that's a direction that I'm currently leaning. Any other comment, question? All right, let's have a roll call.
You need to identify who you're going to.
We have to pick one.
Pick some stuff.
So would we need to amend the motion with the?
McMahon?
Okay.
Or whichever direction you're going.
Yeah. So why don't we do a, why don't we just go through the list for first choices? Just do a show of hands, is that okay?
Sure.
All those with the first choice of DeYoung? With the first choice of Gov. HR? One there? The fire RFP, that was the?
70 Allison Burnett.
That's the Allison Burnett?
No, I don't, oh, fire is Allison, yes.
So Allison Burnett would be next. Anyone there? And then McMahon. So it's filling McMahon? And the amount is $29,400? Anything else we need filled in there, Dan? All right. So.
So does the original mover need to amend it or can anyone amend it?
Ms. Quidnaw, you okay with those amendments?
Okay, I can go ahead and say, I move to amend motion 22-9-1-3 to include in the, be it therefore moved on the sixth day of September 2022 by the City of Lake Mills Council, that the city council does hereby approve authorizing the city manager to sign the McMahon proposal for a citywide staffing study in the amount of?
$29,400.
$29,400.
So my understanding is that that was still her motion. There had not been a vote, a vote yet. So she doesn't really have to amend it. It's like she's clarifying it at that point. She's clarified her motion to state that McMahon is the selected entity at the rate that has been proposed. No amendment.
Okay.
Does the second go along? Yeah, well, I believe so. That's the appropriate question.
You okay with that, Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I would keep my second.
Okay. Any other comment or question? So with the blanks being filled in on motion 22-9-1-3 as outlined by Ms. Quidnaw, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item F is Resolution 22-46, which is the final tid number five, reimbursement grant payment, Topol Holdings LLC, 1110 South Main Street. Lori, can you read Resolution 22-46?
Resolution 22-46 authorizing payment of the third and final tid number five reimbursement grant to Topol's Holdings LLC, Topol's Towing Redevelopment Project 1110, South Main Street, parcel identification number 246-0713-2422-003.
Can we have a motion for this resolution, please?
I move to approve Resolution 22-46 authorizing payment of the third and final tid number five reimbursement grant to Topol's Holdings LLC.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
You have made two previous grant, tid grant reimbursement payments to Topols. The third criteria is listed in the, what, fourth whereas? And that's the exact contract language that was provided. They do have an occupancy permit. I believe they've actually started business at that location. Project went very, very well, from my understanding, and is complete. So as a matter of contract, they are entitled to that third tid payment that's outlined in both the development agreement and the motion that's, or the resolution that's presented to you. Are there specific questions that you'd have about this?
Any questions or comments? Guess you did a great job by outlining that.
It's the, the development agreement, you know, that's kind of has some weight.
All right, can we have a roll call for Resolution 22-46?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item G, which is ordinance 1241. This is a petition for annexing from Farmers Merchants Bank, parcel 018-0713-1113-039. It's a third reading. I just probably read what you were going to read, Lori. Does that suffice or do you need to read anything else there, Lori?
Nope, you got it.
Fantastic, thank you. Just trying to.
You're welcome.
Trying to help you out tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1241, petition for annexation from Farmers and Merchants State Bank.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
This is located near the intersection of County Highway V and B on the west side of the city, near Terranina Park. They plan on building a new bank. They will be on the planning commission agenda in September. So other than that, it's, it's just a clean annexation.
And as I recall, they, we've already annexed the parcel on the immediate corner. And then this is just to the south of that. I think there used to be a house there that was demolished.
We actually annexed two other parcels already.
Two, okay.
And this will be the third. And then they'll be combining this by CSM. And then they'll, they've done their BSO. And because they have a drive-through, they need to have a condition use permit.
All right, any other questions? This is the third reading, so we'll be voting tonight. Seeing no further questions, can we have a roll call for ordinance 1241?
Ms. Quidnaw?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to stop short this time, but item H is ordinance 1242. It is a third reading. Lori, can you read that?
Ordinance 1242 zoning ordinance amending section 660-56 landing land use regulations and the matrix of land uses, commercial indoor lodging.
Can we have a motion?
I have one point of clarification. Mr. Joshua, this motion, this ordinance will require an amendment. Should I do the motion to approve and then follow up with the amendment? Or do I need to do the amendment first?
Well, I think you can state in your motion what the amendment is as well, if you want to just do one motion.
Okay.
If it's clear. Otherwise, you can certainly motion for adoption and subsequently motion to amend.
Sure, I'll try to do that and be as clear as possible. I move to approve ordinance 1242 zoning ordinance amending section 660-56 land use regulations and the matrix of land uses, commercial indoor lodging, with an amendment striking section four and renumbering. lodging, with an amendment striking section four and renumbering the remaining sections.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields, to ordinance twelve forty-two, striking section four and re-labeling the remaining sections, is that correct? Okay. Staff comment?
Well, I, I was hoping to have a more specific type than just across the board, as noted in my memo, for the conditional use, so that, you know, like if you had a concern about first-floor entries, that would be the conditional use rather than just across the board, all hotels, motels. Other than that, I don't really have a lot to say, the motel's going to the Plan Commission as a PDD and not September anyways.
Steve, I noticed that on the city's webpage, that they're proposing another zoning change to go to, from planned business to planned, PDD?
PD, the zoning will stay the same, PDD is actually kind of like a subdivision-type process, and it allows them to make modifications to some of the zoning requirements, in this case, it's height. Planned business only allows thirty-five feet, and they were, they were exceeding that, so that'll, they can't come in under a PDD.
And so then how does that relate to this ordinance proposal? If they were subject to this, would they also then need to do a conditional use permit? Or they would, everything would be reviewed under the PDD?
Well, the, not everyone would need a PDD, there, but if you, so if you were under thirty-five feet, you wouldn't need a P, the PDD, this one would capture those. If you were above thirty-five feet, you would need a PDD plus a conditional use permit under this ordinance. But you could go back and also flip it and say that, you know, if your building is over thirty-five feet, you could use a conditional use permit, if your building has first-floor entry, it could, it needs a, it's just, it's just like what happened here, they exceeded a standard that we have in place, and so now they have to do a PDD. If you looked at a conditional use permit that was more precise to that type of condition, rather than just blanketing them, then you would have a very similar situation. So those are the, the kinds of things that I, that I would think of.
Any other questions? Or comments?
Well, I know we discussed this at the first reading, but Mrs. Bishop, I was wondering if you could talk again about why you feel this change is needed, and I know the item that you struck, the Plan Commission did not vote in favor of this, and so if you could just address that.
Right, so to address that, I want to go back to what the requirements of a conditional use permit are. First off, there would be a public notice and hearing at the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission would take that in, and then make a recommendation to council, and then council sees it yet again at the next meeting. The requirements for a conditional use permit, excuse me, there are a few of them, but they talk about establishing, maintaining and operating of the proposed conditional use will not be detrimental, so these are findings, right, you have to make these findings. So the operation of the proposed conditional use will not be detrimental, two are in danger of the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. It talks about the conditional use is not injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity. I'll just try to do it, you know, quickly. The establishment of the proposed conditional use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities will be provided. Adequate measures will be taken to provide ingress and egress, to minimize traffic congestion. The proposed conditional use in all aspects shall conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it's located. The proposed conditional use and its location is in harmony with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies and standards of the City of Lake Mills, and the potential public benefits of the proposed use outweigh any and all potential adverse impacts of the proposed use. So those are the findings that the Plan Commission has to make, we do that in conjunction with the petitioner applying for the conditional use, and also with our engineers and planners. And when I see conditional use permits most is when there's a use that's like, not quite in line with the main district, or there are additional considerations like those outlined that need to be taken into account. And I think of the one we just did for Laughing Dogs, so that's an industrial zone, but you have a kennel with overnight use, usually in the industrial zone you have noise, so the kennel might be in line with that, but you don't usually have overnight use for those businesses in industrial zones, and the kennel created some additional considerations that we had to discuss as a city. And so that's something that I feel like hotels also create in both the planned business and the neighborhood business districts, where we have to consider the safety and morale of the people around us, even if you look at the downtown business district, which is where hotels concurrently go in as of right, this would change that to make it a conditional use, that we consider the things that I just listed, traffic, we have people who live downtown in apartments that could be affected by a hotel that's going in, that maybe we need to have additional considerations for. What considerations are there for parking, ingress and egress of traffic, safety considerations? If we look at the two hotels, well, they've not been in the city, but the Econo Lodge on Oasis Lane, and the, I'm blanking on the name, the Pyramid Hotel, Motel and Liquor, I think, those were.
Did you remember that place?
I was not here then, I had to do some research. Nobody could remember the name of that place every time I asked. So I had to do a little bit of digging. When we look at the considerations those hotels bring, you know, even though they weren't inside our city limits, they were in similar types of districts, mainly the, what is now the planned business corridor in Lake Mills is where the old Pyramid Motel was located. And you do have issues that are brought in by hotels and motels that are safety-related. Calls for service to those two locations have included in the past two or three years, each of those locations have been serviced, they went back to twenty-fifteen for the Pyramid Hotel. And those issues include drugs, domestic disputes, disorderly conducts, most notably was an article out of Milwaukee where a child kidnapping took place, and the child was actually found at the Pyramid Motel here in Lake Mills, and that has to do with our unique location right on the I-94 corridor. And so what safety considerations are being taken into account for any hotel or motel in our city? And a conditional use permit is one of those tools that we as a city have at our disposal, not to impede business, but to make sure that all of the considerations are met, both from a business perspective and a city planning perspective and a citizen perspective, for people who are going to be affected by those locations. And so, you know, I feel like the CUP process addresses all of that, and I hope Ms. Curler, some of that consideration and background from me helps address your question. I'm willing to answer anything else that you have, but those are my main considerations for why we're doing this, or why I've proposed this.
Did you have a follow-up question?
Well, yes, I do, I guess. I, I am struck by how this does seem to be singled out for one type of business use, and also noting that the Plan Commission did not, did not recommend adopting this, and it seems very targeted, I'm just wondering why, why we wouldn't wait for the comprehensive plan update and to see if this, you know, becomes an issue that the Plan Commission would want to update that matrix, you know, more broadly, rather than just doing this one singly, I guess I'm, I, I think about all the, all the, the standards and findings that you've described that need to be made with a conditional use permit, yes, those are all important for any development that would occur in the city. The Plan Commission, according to S.D.'s memo, made a decision, what, about twenty years ago, to streamline the process for certain, you know, categories of development so that they could be done through a staff-led process and not have to go through those additional steps. And so I guess I'm trying to understand what, what's not working about the current process, maybe that would drive this need.
So I'd like to give a couple of examples, the first, backing up to my very first one, I said Laughing Dogs was an interesting use in that industrial area. Second, where we've seen conditional use permits has been for drive-through fast-food restaurants, Culvers, for instance, required a conditional use permit specifically for that drive-through because of the effect that traffic had, would have created by that drive-through and the effect on its neighboring property. And so, again, that goes back to one of the threshold things that you look at for a conditional use permit, what's its effect on its, on its neighboring property, does that jive with, using Culvers as the example, the car wash and pizza pit next door? And so that's why a conditional use permit was used there, just by way of example. By other way of example, if you look at the matrix of land uses, bed and breakfast are the other type of lodging where conditional use permits are required across the board in all zoning districts where bed and breakfast are allowed. You can go further down the matrix, and other businesses also require conditional use permits across the board, I had a couple of them here. One of them is auto body repair, again, I think for some of the same considerations I've mentioned. Another is commercial animal boarding, another is a commercial wind energy system. Convenience stores, just by nature of being a convenience store, requires a conditional use permit across all districts where they're allowed. So I don't feel like this is specifically targeted, I feel like it meets a planning need that the city has not yet addressed. And to address your concern about the lack of support from the Plan Commission, I think the Plan Commission sits in a very different position than this council does. They, sure, they have long-term plans, but they're also not elected officials, and they don't have a concern to a constituency like we do. And I think our constituents do have an interest in the health, safety, and welfare of these types of establishments and the problems that they could cause that would require that additional planning consideration through a conditional use permit. And so I just see that this council sits at a, a different level and has a different perspective on these types of issues maybe than an unelected board. And to your point about waiting for a comprehensive plan, I mean, you can make that argument for anything, well, let's wait for a comprehensive plan, you don't have to wait every ten years to make these types of decisions that I've proposed in this ordinance.
Any other follow-up there? Any other questions? Mrs. Bishop, you struck a chord with me on the safety aspect, I, I travel a lot, and I, I see a lot of different things when I, when I travel, and, and that, that strike a chord with me, of course. Looking at the business-friendly aspect of this, just restricting the, the ability for, for businesses, businesses to come in, I don't think we want to be necessarily anti-business, but this does make it, make it a little bit harder, can you, can you address that a little bit?
Sure, so I disagree with the premise that on its face, a conditional use permit makes it harder, I just listed off several and not all of the types of businesses in our town that are subject to conditional use permits, and sitting on the Plan Commission and this council now for the last more than year and a half, I've seen the conditional use permit process being a collaborative one with the developer and the petitioner. I've seen us working with those petitioners, and to date, I don't, I could be wrong, but I don't think I've seen one conditional use permit come before the Plan Commission and after that collaborative process having been disapproved for final recommendations. So I think.
Some have stalled out. Well, maybe not completely out, but they're still out there and haven't came back yet.
I can think of one, oh, I don't know if that was a conditional use permit, that hasn't come to this council even after my request, but I haven't seen it stall out since I have been on the Plan Commission, specifically at the Plan Commission level. And I, I could be blanking on that record, but I don't think I am. In regard to the business.
It's probably the one I'm thinking of.
It may be, if it was approved at the Plan Commission level October twenty-sixth of last year, then that's the same one. Then, and in regard to the, the business aspect, you know, Mr. Waters, your first comment or first meeting when I brought this up was that this was anti-business, and again, I just don't think that's the right perspective, I am the daughter of a small business owner, I work for a small business, I have made proposals, multiple ones, at this council and at the Plan Commission that support businesses. And so, again, I don't see this as being anti-business, I see it as taking into account all of our constituents, which include citizens, which include other business owners in this area, specifically in the planned business of B-one districts, and the neighboring, well, the actual neighbors, right, because you have neighbors in downtown, and you have neighborhoods in close proximity to the planned business district that could be impacted, as well as a school with the extra traffic or extra concerns and considerations that are coming in, especially because these are now overnight residents that just bring a different flavor, and I don't mean flavor in any particular way, but a different flavor than the type of patron you would get at a business during a normal nine-to-five business hour.
Thank you for answering that question. Staff, real quick, if, if this was to pass, how would that impact the, the motion that that passed in our last meeting?
They're in a PDD process now, so depending on when it, you know, passed and, and when it got noticed, and then the time period required for the notice to be in place, it could require that they get a conditional use permit too.
I think that's the best answer right now, we're in a bit of a lag, they did start their process with the, the code without requiring a, a conditional use permit in this circumstance, however, they have not received final approval, and I think they're subject to the law as it exists at the time that they go through the process, complete the process, as opposed to initiate the process. So I, I think that's a fair synopsis at, at this point. There is an aspect to this that I'm just not really prepared to say with, like, certainty that that is the treatment. I, I think it's really fact-intensive as to where they started the process, where they're at right now, what approvals and what reliance that has occurred at this point. No doubt, though, even if this were to pass tonight, we would certainly be able to work out a solution with that particular petitioner, I believe.
I have a, a tendency to support this motion, but I don't want it to impact the motion that was made in, or the motion that was approved in our last meeting, so I'd like to move to table ordinance twelve forty-two for a period of one month.
I'll second that.
Is that long enough to get the petitioners through the process?
Really, it, it's the start of the process, they'll be in front of, they're doing another zoning amendment, they appear in front of the Plan Commission at the fourth Tuesday of this month, but then it will take subsequent council action to actually approve that subsequent zoning amendment, and then they'll need approvals of their plans. So I don't think a month is quite enough.
Would we be able to, I'm just gonna ask the question, could we approve with amendment that any business in the process would be exempt from this?
Yes, you could make that amendment, and then they'd be under the code as it existed at the time of application.
I'll withdraw my motion. Mr. Fields?
I move to amend the motion to exempt any business or entity that is in process be exempt from this motion, or resolution, ordinance, sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mr. Fields, second by Mrs., Ms. Curler, to, to exempt people, to exempt businesses that are going through the business process already. Any additional questions or debate? We will need to vote for that, that amendment first, but is there any questions on that amendment? Yep.
Mr. Drescher, how do we define businesses that are in this process?
That is exactly the note that I was just writing down. I think some clarification there is probably necessary.
What I hear is that it's akin to grandfathering a process that's already engaged in as opposed to something that starts new after adoption of this ordinance. I don't want to necessarily name names or name a specific property as you're putting it in ordinance, but I think perhaps establishing a timeframe that after this date, it is deemed to no longer have this grandfather, or it is in full force and effect as of this date in the light of we already have in full force and effect upon publication. So, you're kind of testing a line there. If you have a different standard in mind with regard to that language about being in process, I'd certainly listen to it. Yeah, permitting would be a good way, if they already have permits or they've already engaged in a BSO.
They've already submitted their applications. Submission of applications could be-
submission prior to the adoption of this ordinance?
That's probably a decent one, yeah.
But hasn't been approved, then, I mean, so my concern is, right, if you amend it in this way, Mr. Fields, that you bring it in and start to allow the argument, oh, I was under contract with the purpose of doing this. I've hired attorneys and architects with the purpose of doing this, even though I already own the property. I think you just start allowing argument rather than passing this and then allowing, really, the one person that we know who's already underway and submitted permits without approvals yet. We could just work with that entity as opposed to broadening the scope of people who could make the argument they're already under the process of doing this. Otherwise, you obviate, really, the whole ordinance, is my concern.
But I guess my question was, is if we say the application, that means that they've already submitted their documents to the city for the permit. Would that be pretty direct?
So, the idea would be to exempt any business who's already submitted a permit application?
That's correct.
Or words to that effect. So, it wouldn't be just anybody that, you know, contemplated buying a property or, you know, hired an attorney to start to look into something. It would be they've gotten to a certain point in their process.
You would have to have a document filed with the city. Just because you started working on it, wouldn't hit the requirement for being in the application, having submitted an application to the city already.
So, Dan, would that become a Section 6, then?
Yeah, I think that's fair, as I looked at it. So, are we going with that application, with an active application prior to the date of third reading and subsequent adoption of the ordinance?
I approve.
You good with that, Mrs. Curler?
Yes.
Yes.
Instead of saying in process, that they submitted a permit application.
Thank you for the clarification.
What was the date of the permit application again, please?
I think they were, I thought it was saying anything submitted before the date of the third reading, which would be today.
Ah, okay.
That's correct. That's the way I read it.
And I did specifically state third reading because there will be a lag period here where publishing will occur, and obviously during that, I maybe want to encourage other hoteliers to come forward and submit an application on some land real quick, but I don't think that was really the intent of this action. So, prior to the third reading, and we'll actually establish date certain as well as today.
Today is the third reading?
Correct, September 6th. I'll state September 6th in the amendment.
Does that meet with your intent, Mr. Fields?
Yep. Any other questions or comments? All right. So, we're going to do a roll call on ordinance 1242. We are striking, yep.
We're first voting on the motion to amend, right?
Thank you. So, the motion to amend, can you read that, Mr. Drescher?
Yeah, I'll do my best. What I have right now is that the motion to amend will be, and let me just, you said as a section six.
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense. Just a second sentence there, and it will state that applicants that have filed their building permit application prior to the third reading held on September 6th, 2022, will be exempt from this requirement, from the CUP requirement.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Is that clear enough? Is that, yep?
Please raise your hand. Any further discussion before we move forward with a vote on ordinance 1242 with the two adjustments that were stated prior? Yes?
I appreciate the discussion and all the background and research, Mrs. Bishop, that you've provided. I continue to not be in favor of the overall ordinance change. I think it adds less certainty for business, additional requirements. I don't, there are many items in the matrix and table that have different requirements, CUP or permitted by right for different uses around the city, so I don't think that that's unusual. And I'm concerned that the Plan Commission was not in favor of this, and so, we, you know, we do look to our boards who have experience and expertise to give recommendations, and they were not in support of it either, so I'm not in favor of this ordinance.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? All right, seeing none, let's move to a roll call on ordinance 1242 with Section 4 struck and the addition of Section 6 on the permit application, permitted, or permit applications in process, basically.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
And Ms. Quidaw?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. Thank you.
Just making some quick notes here. All right, thank you. So, ordinance 1243 is next on the agenda. It's a second reading. Lori, can you read that, please?
Ordinance 1243, amending City of Lake Mills, ordinance Section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 246-0713-1241-050, owner 454 Tyerita Park LLC, 454 Tyerita Park Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, that was the second reading. Is there any questions or staff comment on this tonight? Any questions from council members? Seeing none, the next meeting, there'll be the third reading, and we'll have a vote on ordinance 1243 at that time. Moving forward, ordinance 1244, which is also a second reading. Lori, can you read ordinance 1244?
Ordinance 1244, amending City of Lake Mills, ordinance Section 660-44, official zoning map, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin, parcel identification number 246-0714-0734-025, owner Robert Mangan, vacant land east of Brewster Drive and northeast of Tyerita Park Road, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right, that was the second reading. Any comment from staff? Council members? Seeing none? We'll have a third reading of ordinance 1244 at our next meeting, where we will vote. Recommendations for future agendas. I'm going to add a Section 11 to send off Mr. Wilkie. So, future agenda items. Yes?
I think the end of the year and with the new city manager command board will be a good time for this council to meet with the other boards and commissions that we have. We have not yet done so since I've been on this council, and I think there are still people and concerns that we can start talking about and getting ahead of, especially in the next year. So, I'd like to propose a work session before the end of the year with those other boards and commissions.
Yeah, there's already some discussion already taken place on that, but thank you. That's a great recommendation. Yes?
Are we also going to do a work session with the townships again to kind of get them in what direction we're going with EMS, and then also, that'd be a good way to introduce the new city manager to those folks also?
Yeah, I think what we'll want to do is a, probably a closed session in our next meeting with Mr. Drake Daly, talk about some of our items that we have going on right now, what the, what the city council expects from a city manager, make sure the communication is going good in both directions, but for sure EMS is a very important issue that we need to address moving forward. And I'm sure it's going to spend, Mr. Daly will spend a lot of time working on the EMS issue.
I think you went through a little bit of that and it told him where he's at right now.
Is he? Okay. Yes?
I don't know if there needs to be a council agenda item or not, but we had talked during the hiring process that we might want to have some kind of a welcoming event for the new city manager. So, I just think we should plan to talk about that further, whether that's a community-wide event or just with the council, or how we want to do that.
Do you have anything for the future agendas?
I do not.
All right. How about, this is your last meeting, any comment for us tonight?
Staff comment?
Staff comment?
Six pages worth?
Oh.
You wouldn't expect me to make it short, would you?
No, never.
I was appointed on March 7th of 2000 by Mrs. Rogers and Mr. Stevens, but I actually started on May 1st of 2000. I was sworn in at the May 2nd, 2000 council meeting, so it's been a while. Probably the first big project I had was Lake Mills Business Park, which is pretty much complete now. My second day on the job, Duane was here with me, and we had a Corps of Engineers person and a DNR person come in and ask who wanted to go to jail. Al Lu volunteered, seeing as he lives in Wapon, or lived in Wapon, I should clarify that statement. But we had to totally redo the industrial park design and TID number two. So, first thing we did was amend TID number two and redesign it. Duane and I did a lot of work on that. Council did a lot of work on that, came a long way from what we originally had, was a good deal. And from there, we just took off. I can say that I've either replaced or installed about every sidewalk in the city of Lake Mills, and gone through enough special assessment hearings to vouch for that. We redid the Church Street parking lot and the Water Street parking lot, made big differences there. I've done a lot of subdivisions, Olive Brookstone and Ridge and Tyerita Point, Owen Street, Tyerita Ridge, all those. The current wastewater project will be my third that's over a million dollars. This one's a little bit, the current one is currently a little bit more than a million dollars, but they've all been up there. I was involved in the St. Paul's project and getting them located down there. That was a big deal when I came. I was the original, John, David, and I were the original starters of the Jefferson County Economic Development Consortium. We decided to control our destiny and ran a water main through the cemetery. Do you remember that, Duane? And kept the town from starting their own water district. And so, Lake Mills Market ended up in the city, but then it also encouraged Quick Trip to Annex and Connect to Water. So, it made a big difference in how that went. That kind of drove TID number four. I was involved in the new fire station, two $500,000 improvements in the library, the new light and water building, and the remodel of the Public Works Building and moving parks out there from where they used to be in the old electric station on Campus Street. Been involved in two first impressions programs with Random Lake and Prairie de Sheen, Employee Handbook, Arbor Creek, Mills Landing. I was here when we moved to the state health insurance program and when we moved off and formed our own consortium. I was here when we did the first responders program, Cherokee Path, the transportation study, the electric study. So, I was involved in the bringing in of ATC, the American Transmission Company. So, we went from a distribution system of 24.6 or 24.9 to 139 KV. And so, we proved our reliability from the 80s to almost 99%, and no more brownouts. We put in a new substation. We created four circuits, so we made a substantial amount of public improvements in the electric. Like I said already, we've done more water and sewer projects in the last 20 years than we did in the previous 100 years. I was involved in the creation of the Main Street Program, got the council to go along with it, worked with members of the chamber in the community to get the Main Street Program in and get the state approval. I was involved in the Water Street, or not Water Street, I was involved in the Wallace Park Development Plan. So, when I came, it was a greenfield, no roads. Now to being highly developed. We applied for a multi-jurisdictional comprehensive plan grant, and we're given it. So, when our original comprehensive plan was done, it was done with Town of Astlewood, Town of Lake Mills, and City of Jefferson. So, all four of us applied together and wrote ours as one program. One that I don't think a lot of people think of is, but the LEAF Act was a big upgrade in Lake Mills' collection of leaves. And a real improvement for environmental reasons as well as for making the city look clean. So, we take a lot of pride in the fact that our streets are clean. We sweep our streets on a two-week program, which is a BMP for keeping stormwater clean. Another thing that we did around here was we did a stormwater utility study, and that's available. The city, a lot of times I've commented, and Duane can go along with this, that the city believed in immaculate evaporation for stormwater control. So, just about every street, we've had to have major stormwater projects and add other stormwater controls. So, I've been involved in TIDS 2 through 8, and can say that I got through some of the toughest periods in the history of cities in Wisconsin without having a TID go bad because we had the foresight to be able to know how we were going to fund those. Was the first one to do a capital improvement program, the all-hazards mitigation plan, the dam hazards plan, and the dam replacement. I don't know if you guys know, but Duane and I originally applied for the South Main Street Project in 2002, and we signed a contract in 2013, and it got built in 2019. And in Mulberry, we applied in 2015, and it got built in- And in Mulberry, we applied in 2015, and it got built in 2019. Very similar projects, but much larger. One was over $10 million, one was only about $2. We instituted NIMS while I was here, which is a National Incident Management System. Walgreens and that project and TID number 4, so the Ace Hardware and the Walgreens. And that monument sign was a special part of that project. That says, "Welcome to the City of Lake Mills." That was a big part of that project. Institute Wellhead Protection Ordinance. Comprehensive plan, three outdoor recreation plans. Ecode, the new building permit system, rewrite of the zoning and subdivision, computerized timekeeping, the change of the drainage district. So Ditch 35 was under a county governmental organization, and we got the transfer of all Ditch 35 that's in the city transferred to us. So we are responsible for maintaining that drainage ditch.
Where's Ditch 35?
Runs through the industrial park.
Okay.
Was involved in Lake Mills Market, the Catlin Drive Re... project, the finance policies, the South Side Bike Trail Spur, and the boat launch. So those are just a couple of the items. That I've accomplished over the years, so I feel like I've done something. Although there were a couple of years there where nothing got done. 2010, 2009, it was pretty blank.
Well, thank you. That was a great recap, and some of those projects bring back memories. And I guess my one request is that you don't change your cell phone number. You may not want to answer it when Greg Waters flashes up on the screen, but hopefully you will.
Now, you've got my business or my city cell phone number. You don't have my personal one.
I was going to say, be careful, Mr. Waters might change his number.
Yeah, and see, my phone will go to Drake. So if you use that one, you're going to get Drake, not me.
I guess we're going to have to have an offline conversation about your personal phone number, then, I guess.
Yeah.
But it would be great if you'd be a resource every once in a while. There's a lot of knowledge that you have. And sometimes it's hard to get the history of some of the decisions that have been made in the city. And I know for the last 20, you probably have history back 30, 40 years, actually. So it would be great to have access to that.
There probably aren't a lot of people, maybe Dan, maybe Duane, that have read as many minutes as I have.
But thank you again for your service to the city. And it's greatly appreciated. Sad to see the day come, but good luck as you move towards retirement. I know that you'll be... You're the type that's always going to be busy, so I'm sure you'll find some projects to do, and you have a lot of children and grandchildren to chase. But thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You have a great staff. They work hard. And I've tried to protect them as long as I've been here, and you'll have people who criticize them, but don't take it to heart. They're good people.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? Phone numbers?
I'm sure we'll be thanking you again when your official time off the payroll arises and give you a commendation, but thank you for your many years of service, Steve, and I appreciate working with you, especially in this last couple of years.
Thanks.
Just congratulations, and enjoy the reduced stress now.
I don't know if that's reduced stress. I'll have to talk to Laila about that.
Thank you, Steve. Your time here has meant a lot to a lot of people here. I know that the changes that you've put in place have really changed the city. And so your footprint is literally everywhere. 20 years plus is no joke to dedicate to one entity, so that really is remarkable. Thank you.
Thanks.
20-plus years is a really hard act to follow. And I know that whoever or however Drake or whomever after Drake runs the show, it's going to be hard to follow your shadow because you have made such an incredible impact in this city. And I know it hasn't been easy. It hasn't been easy for these 22 years. But you have dealt with it with a sense of grace and a little bit of pride. But I appreciate that you have done those things and stuck with it, even though it was hard. The many hours that you've put into this city, it shows. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think most people agree the city's in a much better place than it was 20 years ago, so thanks. And if there's no other comments, we're going to adjourn this meeting, which is Mr. Wilkie's last city council meeting. Thank you.